To order, if you would join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the thy of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Whittington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
With that, we will move to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of this afternoon's agenda?
Move to approve today's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of today's agenda. Are there any changes or any other issues? I do have one under discussion items. We have Carney Mayor Randy Pogue for a discussion. My understanding is he was not able to make it here today, so we will reschedule that for a separate time. So make the motion that we delete that from the discussion items, number nine on our agenda. So move that to amend our agenda. Are there any, is there any discussion? Very well, I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
That brings us back to approval of the agenda, and now it is approval of the agenda as amended. Are there any, is there any further discussion or changes? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
That brings us to ceremonial matters. We have two items. Administrator, if you'd like to go ahead and introduce the first.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2023-03 is recognizing longstanding Clay County resident, Charles S. Broomfield, and I'd like to introduce Commissioner Whittington to talk about this recognition.
Commissioner.
All right, thank you. So I'll go ahead and I'll read the resolution, if that's okay. So 2023-03, whereas Charles S. Broomfield has dedicated his life to Clay County, and whereas Charles S. Broomfield was born in Harlem, Missouri, attended the Harlem Grade School, and graduated from North Kansas City High School in 1956. During his senior year at North Kansas City High School, Broomfield was elected student body president. And whereas Charles S. Broomfield would go on to earn his bachelor's degree in history from William Jewel College in 1961. Upon graduation from William Jewel, Broomfield taught American government at his alma mater, North Kansas City High School, for four years. And whereas Charles S. Broomfield's political career began in 1965, when he was elected to four terms in the Missouri House of Representatives. During his time in Jefferson City, Broomfield held positions of Assistant Majority Floor Leader and Vice Chairman of the House Education Committee and Federal State Relations Committee. Broomfield was named the 1965 Outstanding Young Man of the Year Award by the Missouri Junior Chamber of Commerce and received the St. Louis Globe Democrat Meritorious Service Award for outstanding legislative service. And whereas, after serving eight years in the Missouri House of Representatives, Broomfield came very close to winning a seat in the United States Congress. And whereas, in 1974, Charles S. Broomfield ran for Clay County Western Judge/Commissioner for the first time and was elected to that position seven times. As county judge/commissioner, Broomfield arranged for the acquisition of Jesse James Farm from Jesse's grandson Lawrence Barr, preserving the James Family Farm as a county museum. And whereas, as county judge/commissioner, Charles S. Broomfield was a key leader in building Smithville Lake and the Clay County Courthouse and Jail in Liberty. Broomfield also led the effort to have the county establish an annex to serve the people of Western Clay County. And whereas, after leaving elected life, Charles S. Broomfield has remained active in the community. Broomfield has served as Vice President of the James Preservation Trust in addressing the issue of missing artifacts from the museum, was appointed by the Clay County Commission to the Parks Advisory Board, and most recently, the Bicentennial Commission. Broomfield was also appointed to Clay County Board of Election by Governor J. Nixon. And now, therefore be it resolved, that the Clay County Commission hereby express its gratitude and sincere appreciation to Charlie "Charles" S. Broomfield for his lifelong service to the citizens of Clay County. So I've known Charlie for almost 25 years now. Charlie's a great friend. He's a mentor of mine. And we also dedicated a portion of Jesse James Road to you. And it's just a great honor to recognize your service to Clay County. So thank you for everything you've done, Charlie.
Charlie, it's been, it's a great honor to have you here, and it's funny, sometimes they talk about we are honoring, that we are somehow honoring you, but you honor us by your presence and by the work that you've done, certainly. So please, if you have a few words you'd like to make, please feel free to go ahead.
I am indeed honored to receive this recognition. Spent some of the best days of my life in this room and in this county. And so thank you very, very much. I also would like to congratulate all of you because you're the first to serve in a new form of government in our county, and the people have chosen each of you to do that. As I look around, I think most of you have significant experience, so you know what you're doing. But gee, you've got a great opportunity to serve the people of Clay County. When Jason called me and told me about this, I thought there are so many other people that contribute to the well-being and welfare of all of us in this county and the state. And it's a great opportunity. It's not an easy thing to do. I think a lot of our former constituents, current constituents, think it's pretty easy. But you all will put a lot of hours and time and energy and effort. You might even end up with gray hair. But it's a great challenge. And you all and all of the other people who are willing to put their lives on the line for public service need to be better received, in my opinion. In the old days, way back when I had dark hair like John, the public had a great, had much more appreciation for those of us who are willing to serve in public office. And one of the things I thought of, you all are doing, I don't remember this type thing ever being done in my time in the county, probably was, and I was unaware of it. But hopefully, the day will come when the public has more appreciation and respect for what people who are willing to serve in public office have to do. I don't need to tell you this. You wouldn't be here if you didn't realize it, believe it, but we really have a great county here. We have so many assets, and I think we have a lot of opportunities to make it even better. And we talked about the James Farm. I'm sending you all a note. We have a diamond in the rough in that James Farm up there. 10 years ago, I was going through some of my records the other night, and I came across a two or three-page letter telling about some of the statistics that the James Farm is having out there. We've had people from all over the world come looking for the James Farm. I was up there one day and ran into it. This has been 20 years ago. Ran into a doctor from, I believe he was from, well, might have been Brazil. He was a medical doctor, but he had always heard about Jesse James, and he came looking for the farm. And anyway, you all have a great opportunity ahead of you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for this wonderful recognition. I sincerely appreciate it. Anytime I can be of any help or service, don't hesitate to call on me. Thank you.
Like I say, it's a great honor that you are here with us today, and we appreciate all that you've done for this county. That brings us to our second honorary recognition. Administrator?
Honorary Resolution 2023-49 is the opportunity to recognize some of our agency partners that have worked with the county over the last couple of years. In 2021, the federal government initiated a program, the Consolidated Appropriations Act of '21, and the American Rescue Plan. And as part of that program, there were funds that were allocated to Clay County under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that allowed us to have funds to help residents with their rental needs and their utility needs, especially during the time of COVID. Over that two-year period, the county received over $5.7 million that was able to be utilized for rental assistance and utility assistance. But the county very wisely recognized in 2021, when we became aware of this opportunity, that we didn't have the resources or the staff available to expedite the use of these funds as quickly as they needed to be. So we reached out and found great partnership with seven agencies in the county that helped us, that had the skill sets to set up the program, to go through the application, and get those funds into the hands of the residents that needed it. And over 1,100 citizens were assisted with these funds due to the partnership with these agencies. And so today, we certainly want to recognize them, show our appreciation to them. I believe all of the agencies have a representative here, so I'm going to ask them to come forward for a picture opportunity, and I'm going to read them. But in addition to our external partners, we certainly want to give recognition to our internal partner, and that is our county auditor's office. They facilitated this program. They worked and reached out to the agencies. They worked with the agencies in getting the funds to them, and also then have the joy and the pleasure of doing all the reporting that is required to the federal government on the uses of these funds. And so without our internal staff and office holder and our external partners, I'm not sure that all those funds would be out in the public where they are now, where they needed to be. And so with that, I'd like to recognize and have the agencies come forward.
Before you do, I wanted to see if the auditor, because I think it's important to have him also give any additions, and then we'll bring up the ladies and gentlemen who represent those agencies. So Mr. Auditor, if you'd like to share a few thoughts?
Yeah, you know, I just echo the comments there from the administrator. You know, really, it's been something of a unique challenge and opportunity for Clay County. These grants came to us by virtue of having over 200,000 residents. It was meant to address those folks who were behind on rent utilities because of the pandemic. And, you know, Clay County didn't really have, you know, as Administrator mentioned, that's not something in our wheelhouse that we do regularly. So we set up really a historic partnership with these agencies, and it just really kind of goes to show. And I think, you know, the resolution will detail as well just essentially how we can create these private-public-type partnerships and really leverage our community resources to serve people and do something good. So, you know, my role is really just a compliance oversight. But I just really want to, you know, provide that opportunity for recognition for these agencies, that we really did something that was truly historic, and maybe something to think about in the future going forward as far as, you know, how we can solve challenges together for this county. So that's really all I have, and I thank all the members here, and I think we'll get a chance to recognize them.
Thank you very much. One of the reasons I wanted to make sure we had that recognition was these funds were used for a good purpose. We, I think, did a good job of administering them. But what I wanted to demonstrate was something that Charlie Broomfield had just raised, and that was our new government and our new way of doing business here in Clay County. And I want to emphasize the fact that I think there was some concern about how would we function as a unit given the new parameters we are working under. And I think having administration working with elected officials outside of the commission shows just how far we've come as a county and how far we are going to be able to go in serving the people of this county. And of course, this is a, you know, this was something that this project was allowing many people to stay in their homes who may not have been able to, and I think it was certainly a worthy cause. With that, I'll see if there's anyone else wants to say anything, and then we'll go ahead and bring the folks up, if that sounds good. Comments? Very good. Please proceed.
Thank you. Let me read the agencies, and again, if you would please come up and come in the center, and we'll do a photo. The Community Action Agency of Greater Kansas City, the Community Care Link, the Guadalupe Centers, Carney Enrichment Council, Metro Lutheran Ministry, Northland Care Access, and United Way of Greater Kansas City. And again, I would also invite Auditor Herbert up to be part of that picture also.
Thank you.
Okay, we might, let's see. We're gonna need to, can we have the front row move this way just a little bit? There we go. One of those should work, right?
We certainly appreciate all of the agencies that were able to step forward on that project. If any of the agencies would like to come forward and make any observations, certainly, please make your way up. I would just say, make sure the green light is on. Speak clearly into the microphone and identify yourself and your organization.
Green light's on. Karen Doe, CEO of Northland Healthcare Access. I really appreciate you recognizing us. So what am I? What did I do wrong? Thank you. Okay. But I do have to recognize you because so many counties didn't do it like you did it and get it out to the community. You talk about the people that we help, but we also help the landlords. And we've really stabilized housing in Clay County. And that comes back to all of you for deciding to give it out, give it back out to the people in your community and not keeping it for yourselves. So thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Becky Poitras. I'm the Vice President and Assistant Executive Director of Metro Lutheran Ministry. I'd like to echo what Karen said, that thanks to the foresight of the commissioners of this county in partnership with our other elected officials and our staff officials in Clay County, you were able to bring together a public-private partnership that was extremely effective, not only at keeping folks housed in our county, keeping those that have the lowest income in our county housed, but also helping those who had already lost their housing to get rehoused. So through these dollars, these 1,100 citizen households in the county were able to retain their housing or were able to regain housing. We reduced homelessness because of these dollars. We reduced the number of families that would have become homeless in the county. So I would just like to say, as a homeless services provider, as someone who has been working in Clay County for the last two decades, thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for allowing us, as an organization, to partner with these other organizations, to bring together the good work that needed to be done to make a huge impact on the least among us in Clay County during this horrible pandemic. So thank you all very much.
Anyone else wishing to make further comments? One of the things I want to make a comment about before we leave this subject, and that is, in no small part due to our partners, especially United Way, we were able to partner with our friends in Kansas City because we have overlapping jurisdictions. And what that enabled us to do was two things. One, to make sure that we did not have a duplication of effort, so that the, those funds could go as far as they possibly could. And secondarily, it provided protection, enhanced protection, that people would not be falling through the cracks and that we would make sure that everybody who wanted to, who was qualified, wanted to participate, was able to participate in this program. So it goes beyond just providing the service, but also a professionalism in the execution of it that I think is certainly a great example of where we should be as government doing business. With that, is there any comment from anyone else on the commission? Very well. With that, we will move on to our public comments. Is there anyone present wishing to make any public comments? Seeing none, that brings us to our immediate action agenda. Administrator?
Thank you. There are three items on your immediate action agenda item this afternoon. Resolution 2023-61 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from February 3rd to February 9th. Their total of 349 invoices totaling the amount of $3,494,263.34. Resolution 2023-50 is approving the lease agreement for the Jesse James Bank Museum. This is an annual agreement. There are no changes in the lease agreement. And then Resolution 2023-53, which is approving a revocable event license with Professional Disc Golf Association for the 2023 Disc Golf Tournament at Smithville Lake. This is an annual event.
Are there any questions or comments? Is there anyone wishing to make a motion related to our immediate action agenda?
Yes, I move to approve 2023-61, 2023-50, 2023-53.
Motion has been made for the approval of the three items on our immediate action agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none? I'm sorry, did you? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on our regular agenda is 2023-62. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-62 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from February 3rd to February 9th. Their total of 10 invoices for the amount of $6,663.35.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion on 2023-62?
Yes, move to approve 2023-62.
Motion has been made for approval of 2023-62. Discussion seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
That brings us to three companion issues, 2023-54, 55, and 56. Administrator?
Resolution, excuse me, 2023-54, 2023-55, and 2023-56 is a consideration of rezoning, preliminary plat, and final plat for the McKinley Family Farm. And Director Jones is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So I apologize, we don't have the PowerPoint, but we printed out a copy for everyone, and I'll do my best to kind of go through it page by page, but feel free to ask questions. I will promise, Commissioner Lawson, the first slide was the curtain slide, so we'll have it next time. So McKinney Family Farm is a rezoning, preliminary, and final plat. So if you go to page two, it shows the property as is, outlined in yellow. It's approximately 25 acres. It's unplatted, zoned ag. It has access from Seahighway. The blue line indicates the Blue Line Stream, which will have a stream setback. It basically becomes a no-build zone. And the one item I want to point out, in kind of the northeast corner, there's a red square. That is an old barn that was constructed in the early 1900s that actually sits on, partly on the property to the north as well, the neighboring property. There's an old fence line there that they thought was the property line. After the survey was done, that property line's farther south than what they thought when that barn was built. Luckily, there's a lean-to on the north side of the barn that you'll see is one of the conditions for this to be approved, is that lean-to is going to be removed to get that barn all on this property. The applicant has agreed to that condition, but that will be one of the two conditions at the very end. It is allowed, that barn is allowed to exist closer to the property line than what's normally allowed because it's considered a non-conforming structure at this point. If you go to page three, this shows what they're proposing, and it's a little bit confusing because I have all the colors on there. The purple is a five-acre lot, so we're basically creating two lots. The five-acre lot in purple, and then the roughly 20-acre lot in green. The light blue indicates the agricultural land preservation, which is required for each lot under 20 acres. The yellow indicates the utility easements that would be placed around the outside property. We would zone the five-acre lot to R5, as that's our current standard for that size lot, and the green lot would go to R1. The next slide shows the surrounding area. The subject parcel is in orange. Smithville Lake is in the dark green. And then all the parcels that are either purple or yellow are lots that are between five and less than 20 acres. So they're similar to the lots that we're creating with these two lots. Everything that's left in the light green is ag-zoned property. If you go to the next slide, it talks about the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. This property is located in the Natural Resources Tier, which allows five-plus acre lots, as long as an agricultural land preservation is included. It also has the five rezoning criteria that we talked about with all of our rezoning cases. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that those rezoning criteria had been met, and the proposed project is is consistent with the comp plan. If you go to our next slide, it talks about the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this case. We put this case in the newspaper, sent seven certified letters, and then, we also reached out to outside agencies, because we're trying to create buildable lots, two lots in this case. None of those outside agencies had any objections, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero for, to recommend approval with the two conditions that the applicant has agreed to. Those are the changes, some minor changes to the recording copy of the plat, and then, the removal of that portion of the barn that sits on the adjacent property. Staff believes this is, this case does meet the criteria that we discussed at the previous meeting to be approved at one county commission meeting, if you choose to do that. And I am happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present as well.
Are there any questions of the director? Seeing none, if the applicant would like to comment, they certainly may feel free to. It is not required, but if you'd like to add anything, you're certainly welcome to do so. Very well. Is there a, we have two options here. We could move this to the next meeting if we wanted to put it on the future agenda, or of course, we can pass it at this meeting. I would remind commissioners, if they chose to pass it at this meeting, to indicate in their motion that the box, appropriate box be checked on the resolution. With that, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to check the box for approval and approve 2023-54, 2023-55, and 2023-56.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-54, 55, and 56, with the box marked "approved," checked. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Very good. That moves us to the next item on our agenda. Once again, three bundled items, 2023-57, 58, and 59. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-57, 2023-58, and 2023-59 are companion resolutions for the zone, the rezoning, the preliminary plat, and the final plat for the Baker Acres subdivision. And Director Jones is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Director. So, if you go to the slide past the Baker Acres title slide, it shows the property outlined in blue. It's currently 55 acres, unplatted. It's zoned agricultural, and it gets its access from Missouri City Road. If you go to the next slide, it kind of shows what the proposal is. It's similar to the previous case. We're creating two lots. There's a large 50-plus acre lot that's indicated in red, and then, a five-acre lot in purple with the agricultural land preservation noted in the green. We would rezone this lot to R5, which is our current standard for five but less than 10 acres. It would include that agricultural land preservation, and the 50 acres meets an exemption to the plating process, which is 40-plus acres with 100 feet of road frontage with access, so it does not have to be shown on the plat and can remain unplatted. If you go to the next slide, it shows the surrounding area with the subject parcel in, part of it's in red and part of it's in orange. The purple to the west is the Liberty City Limits. And you can see all of the parcels that are kind of in the light yellow. Most of those plats were done in the 70s. Those lots are anywhere from three to less than 10 acres, so we feel the five acres meets the surrounding area. And then, everything in the kind of light green is zoned agricultural. And you can see the Ferris Farm located to the east of the subject property. If you go to the next slide, it talks about the comp plan and the land development code. This one's located in the rural low-density tier, which allows that exemption with the five-plus acres with the agricultural land preservation. And then, this case has the same five rezoning criteria. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt those had been addressed by the applicant. And if you go to the next slide, talks about the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and additional information. We did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. However, we did have citizens at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting ask questions about the future driveway location and the differences between ag and R5 zoning. I feel like staff answered those questions during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We published this case in the newspaper, posted a sign, and sent a total of 34 letters, and we received no objections from outside agencies. Again, the goal is to create a buildable lot. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval with one condition, which is some minor changes to the recording copy of the plat. Staff believes this also meets those requirements that were discussed earlier and could be voted on and approved at one county commission meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Yes, I just wanted to make a clarification, and that is, there were questions asked, but what I pick up on what you're saying, just to make sure I have it correct, is that there was no opposition. It was just merely questions, not, not someone who had a problem with it going forward.
Agreed. And even one of the citizens stated he had no opposition to it, but had some questions.
Very good. Any questions of the director? Is, if the applicant is present and would like to speak, they are certainly welcome to, but as before, if they choose not to, that's not, it's certainly your option. Very good. With that, I will also make the observation I did on the last bundled set of issues, and I would again remind commissioners that if you make a motion, that the box must be indicated, how it would be checked. With that, unless there was further discussion, is there a motion on these three items?
Yes, I move to check the box as approved and pass 2023-57, 2023-58, and 2023-59.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-57, 58, and 59, with the box marked "approved," indicated. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Very good. That brings us to 2023-60. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-60 is approval of the official Clay County zoning map as of 2022, and Director Jones is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So, we do this once a year. This basically changes the zoning map with all of the rezonings approved by county commission in '22, and then also includes any annexations by the cities from last year. We post this approved map on the Planning and Zoning website. We have a hard copy in the office, and then, the assessor is good enough to allow us, or they publish our zoning on their map that is interactive, that the public can pull up as well. So, there's three places to see the county zoning. This was last approved last April. Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to approve the '22 zoning map, and we had no comments from the public for this case. And again, staff feels this meets those requirements where it could be voted on and approved at one county commission meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments for the director? Seeing none. Is there anyone else? Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just, just to reconfirm, basically, everything that is in the plan is what has happened previously. It is just a reflection of those actions that have already occurred.
Yes, it just allows us to update the map. We don't do it after every rezoning. We do it once a year, basically.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion on 2023-60?
Yes, I move to approve 2023-60.
Motion's been made for approval of 2023-60. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to item 2023-51. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-51 is consideration of approving the Clay County Collector's Report and recommendations of the tax sale surplus that occurred earlier this year for certain parcels. Collector O'Reilly is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
I thank you, Barbara O'Reilly, Collector. This resolution 2023-51 is a report and my recommendation for the 2021 surplus on the tax sale. I asked the commission to direct the treasurer to distribute the surplus to the school fund of the county, the school fund, and the paperwork is all attached and the information.
Is there, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-51?
Yes, I move to approve 2023-51.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-51. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2023-52. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-52 is consideration of approving a term and supply agreement between Rico Business Solutions and Clay County for copier-printer lease services for the Recorder of Deeds Office. Deputy County Administrator Coons is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Yes, this is actually one of these. It is a term and supply, but it actually offers us a substantial savings. The Recorder of Deeds previously owned their own copy machine, had to pay for all their repairs and supplies, and spent approximately $4,100 last year on that piece of equipment. By moving to the term and supply agreement that the rest of the county uses with Rico copier services, their annual fee will be $688.32. And important of note is this includes, it provides all their toner and supplies for the copy machine. So, we're asking approval for this term and supply for the Recorder of Deeds.
Very good. Are there any questions? Commissioner?
Well, only, just, because I'm on a roll about passing things today, I think. I just wanted to double-check, because I'm looking at the commission action. I'm channeling my, some of my friends here. But, just to be sure that, that this, this can be passed next week, or, as I'm looking on the request, it says, I just want to confirm if I'm hitting the accelerator again, or just slightly tapping on the brake for next week.
You can, you can move it to today, or it can be passed next week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, in fact, I was, I was going to remind the commission that we did not need to pass everything tonight if, and I, I think you're right, because this is a contract. I think it's always good if we have the option to take our time and make sure the contract is in fact in the best interest of the county. So, if commissioners would like further time to consider it, I think that would make sense. Commissioner Whittington?
Is this the same contract we currently have? We're just adding one more printer to the contract?
That is correct. The rest of the county uses Rico services, but since they had purchased their own, they had never been on the countywide services. So, this moves them to a contract and adds them on to the master Rico contract.
So, the commission has already approved this contract once before, right?
That is correct. This is a term and supply. That's correct.
So, I don't see any problem passing this tonight, since the commission's already approved the contract. We're just adding one more printer copier to the, to the contract that we already have, that's already been permitted. So, I would, I would like to make a motion that we approve this tonight and just move on. Okay?
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-52. Discussion. I don't have a particular problem with that, but I do have concerns that we are talking about the expenditure taxpayer money. That bothers me to pass it without more thought. And while this was a contract that was previously passed by the commission, it was not passed by this commission.
Well, I think she said we'll save money, because you said this would just be $600 versus $4,200 we spent last year?
Yeah, we spent approximately $4,100. This will make the annual term $688.32 for the year for them to have this copier.
So, we'll be saving the taxpayers' money?
We'll be saving taxpayer money if we pass it tonight or next week. Will that have any effect on the taxpayer savings?
No, it's an annual cost, so it's for the whole year.
Once again, and I question whether or not, because generally, when we're talking about the expenditure taxpayer money, not only does it not go onto consent agenda for the following week, but it usually goes on regular agenda. Certainly, the commission can act as it pleases in this particular matter, but quite honestly, my part, I err on the side of caution when we're talking about spending taxpayer money. I think it's very serious business. Any other, Commissioner Johnson, did you have a?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Whittington. So, just for the record, we've had this for, since last week. So, I don't know what having another week and staring at it's going to do. So, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Whittington.
Further comment on the motion on the floor. Commissioner Lawson, please.
Yeah, I agree with my other two esteemed commissioners. If we had just seen this for the first time, or it was a brand-new contract, I'd say, hold the phone. But, in this instance, it's something we've been operating with for a long while. We're making some improvements. We're, we're not asking for a large sum of money. It's, it's going to save us money. I don't see any reason to carry around. Let's get it done and be on our way to more lucrative things.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. So, to me, it's just a matter of timing as far as the action. So, is the, how soon does a copier arrive based on the arrangements that we've made with them to date? When, when would we expect that?
Usually within a week.
Okay. So, okay. I think I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Before we go for, before I recognize the maker of the amendment, or the maker of the motion, Mr. Counselor, does this require a unanimous vote?
It would certainly require unanimous vote if you want to.
Very good. With that, I would recognize Commissioner Whittington to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Very well. 2023-52 passes. That brings us to the next item on our agenda. I can turn my page. That brings us to 2023, 2023-63. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-63 is the financial statement of the county clerk for tax levies and valuations for the year ending December 31st, 2022. This is an annual process in which the county does and has commission approval before the statement is then published in a newspaper of reading. I do believe that the county counselor wants to provide some information about this, because we are talking about 2022 information, and four of you were not sitting on the commission in 2022.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I am strongly requesting that this matter not be passed tonight and be put on regular for next week. Here's what I want to kind of walk you through, and I'll tell you, there's a statute involved, or a couple statutes involved I really don't like, and I'm struggling with how to navigate them in light of our commission. So, if you look, do you all have the packet, or do you have a digital version?
We have a digital.
Okay. So, if you go to the sixth page back, you should see a document that says "tax levies and valuations for the year 2022." And it has a signature line for each of you. Do you see that? I think it says-
Well, page 106 on our packets.
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
They do electronic.
Okay. Is everybody, see that signature line? Okay. So, the problem I have is this, is, it's a certification. So, if you read the part that says, we, you know, the commissioners, we certify that the above and forth going is a complete and correct statement of every item of information required in Section 50.815 for the year ending 2022. And, we have checked every receipt from every source and every disbursement of every kind, and to whom and for what each disbursement was made. So, the seven of you would be signing that and certifying that. And, the problem I've got is twofold, at least twofold, is the statute involved does require that every, each commissioner, quote, each commissioner of the county commission and the county clerk shall sign the certificate. So, you're required under the statute to sign this, but it's for the preceding year. And, the good news is, and that's a joke, if you, any person who falsely certifies to any fact in the certificate is guilty of criminal offense. So, it's a crime if you certify that you've done something and haven't done it. And it's, there's also a separate provision that says it's a, it's a failure to neglect of your office if you just refuse to sign it. So, I really don't like the interplay of these statutes, and because- So I, I really don't like the interplay of these statutes, and because we have four new Commissioners, none of whom were here last year, uh, I just want to caution you that that's what you're signing. Um, I will, I will tell you that the statute indicates that the, uh, State Auditor's Office prepares these documents in forms, and I've been on the phone with the State Auditor's Office Legal Department on this. Uh, and they are not real comfortable with what to do, and they are going to, quote, get back to you. So, so for that reason, I'm going to ask that you put it off to next week, for sure. Uh, but I want to give the four new commi, I, I think the, the three holdover Commissioners certainly can do this. I think it's appropriate, and it's been done forever. Uh, but the three, the four of you that are new Commissioners, I want you to understand what you're signing and what you're saying you've done, uh, before you do it. Now, of course, next year, this won't be a problem, because you're going to be here all year, and have gone through the things and the warrants that we do every week. So I'll, I'll pause there, are there questions, uh, about this?
Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you, um, and, uh, I, I'm happy to put this off till next year, if that's necessary. But I, I, it does strike me that whenever you have a changeover in any legislative body like this, you will have the same problem. Jackson County, I would assume, is having this very same piece of paper in front of them, and they've got five or six new folks who are now serving, who did not last year. So, uh, this is certainly not the first time something like this has come up, and so I guess my question is, does the state just ignore it, like they've had, must have ignored it every other time this has come up? I, I mean, I guess, there, there is certainly what the law says, and then there is how it would be prosecuted, and it would, it would fail, um, I would think, if it were ever brought to court, so I.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying, but I don't want you all to not know this is in play.
Sure.
Uh, I, I suspect that if you all vote to approve it, and everybody signs it, it will go in the dust pile and will be done. But I, I just want you to be aware of what it, what the statute says.
Well, I, I want something to vote on next week, so I'm happy to hold it over till next week.
Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner Lawson.
Uh, the only question I have for you, would it be advisable for you to set up maybe a meeting with the four new Commissioners? Post it, and then we could sit down with you, and you can go over it? Is that a necessity, or can we do that alone, or?
It, it, well, you mean, when you say go over it, you mean all the receipts and the?
Well, just what you feel is vital for us to understand.
The, I'll tell you, the, the simplest route for you, or this safest route for you, would be for the four of you to schedule time with the Clerk's Office to go over the information that would allow you to comply with this statute. Now that won't be necessarily a short process.
I understand.
Um, but that would be the, the safest route, because then next week you can come up, you can vote and say, yep, I can certify that I've looked at the expenditures and the receipts, and I'm comfortable certifying that.
Okay.
That would be the simplest route, safest route, but I, but I want you to understand that that's not necessarily, um, I mean, it's going to take some time.
Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you, um, so, does that mean the, the, the four clerk has to pull out every box, and we just start rummaging through it?
I, I, I don't know how they store them, I don't know how this would be accomplished, and I'll leave that to the Clerk's Office to tell you how to accomplish this, should you choose that route.
Congratulations on getting that short straw, um, but, um, I, I guess my other question then is, by when does this have to be certified and returned?
So we, we work backwards from the June 30th, um, date. I think it has to be published by then. Uh, on or before June 30th, each year, uh, shall prepare and publish in the newspapers, so we've got some time, I think.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Farther out than one week.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, a couple things to provide Commissioners information. So I believe, and I defer to the clerk and the auditor, but all our expenditures are out on the county's website by year. So in essence, there is a listing out there, um, that is similar to what you just approved tonight for expenditures for the last week, so.
Is that 663-page document that I looked at before?
That would be it.
Oh, yeah, well, I've seen everything, yeah.
Yeah, so you, I know that you've gone through it, um, but, so I'm saying it is available to you, uh, as it is to the public, um, because it's out on our trans, uh, I believe the trans, the, the portal, yeah. Um, so that information is there, and that's in essence, if you were to come in with the clerk, that would be the same information that we would have for you. And then if you saw something that, um, you had questions about, then we could, you could contact staff, and we could pull up the backup documentation for you to see that if you had specific questions. So it is available if you'd like to view it online.
Well, for, I appreciate that, and I've done so before, and, and I think it is extremely helpful, but I, I guess my, what all that leads to for me is that, you know, that is a fairly high bar of time, and, and, um, if there is time, I guess my, the next question I have is, is there a reason then not to, to, not, to go beyond next week to actually pass this, and?
I think we have lots of time on this.
Yeah, right, I, I believe under the state law changed, so the publication date has moved to June? June 30th. So technically, you don't have to do this and sign the certification, um, we'd have to look at publication dates, right? Because we have to get it in the paper, I'm assuming by June 30th. So I would say that you, you know, you would have until June 1st, um, to, to take your time to go through those items that are, you know, previous year's receipts.
Well, I've, I've rummaged through that 623 pages, so I'm good, but I also want to be cognizant that everyone else doesn't have that, didn't have that luxury, and so want to suggest if there's another date that people are comfortable with, that's certainly fine.
Commissioner Lawson?
Uh, the only thing, I, I'd like to ask the old Commissioners, not old, but you know, I mean, experienced Commissioners, what'd you all do last year?
I'm the oldest one, so I can go ahead and answer first. I guess age before any other attribute, any other attribute you care to name. Yeah, uh, yeah, I would, uh, enjoy the hospitality of the Clerk's Office. Uh, every year, for a number of hours, they would actually feed me, which I certainly appreciate. Uh, but yeah, it was hours and hours of going through, signing each and every one, because when there were three Commissioners, our signatures had to appear. Um, it was, it was the subject of considerable controversy in the, uh, in the Commission, say, four years ago and previous to that, um, because a number of those Commissioners were not signing their documents, and that technically put them in a legally precarious position. I remember the deadline being a little bit sooner than June, so I'm glad.
That's correct, I think it was in February or March.
It was March 1st, I believe.
Under the old statute. And, and so what we did is, in the last two years, um, you know, it was these three Commissioners, Commissioner Nolte had been here for a while, uh, the two new Commissioners that came on, we made sure that they were both up to speed, so that when they were certifying it, they were good to go. Um, but now, obviously, it would be a much broader net for the four of you, uh, and it is going to be a.
So did they meet with the clerk as well?
Yeah, I mean, well, I understand, the easy one was, uh, Commissioner Thompson was the clerk, so she had seen this, everything.
Oh, okay, I forgot about that.
So she had seen everything, yeah, and then we worked with the Commissioner.
She has seen everything, yeah, okay.
Yes, and we worked with the Commissioner Harper as well.
But we would generally be signing, because, uh, under the old method, we would get all of those, and in the same way that I sign off on the things that we vote on, I'll sign off a number of today, we also, uh, would sit down and spend an hour maybe after the meeting signing off on them, and then I would go back and spend several hours going through a considerable number, how, I don't know how many, uh, exact invoices, making sure that I had not inadvertently forgotten, because I don't think, um, forgetting is a good enough excuse as far as the state's concerned, at least that was the impression I had.
Right, right.
Uh, so, yeah, it was a matter of going through each invoice, um, and it's a healthy thing, because there were, in the past, I mean, this is, this is a good method, I know it sounds like a lot of work, but there were a number of issues, like, oh, I don't know, $600 coffee maker, that would be one of the things that would, you would uncover on that. So, yeah, I, I don't think we have that to worry about at the moment, but that is exactly what that exercise was meant to bring to light. So, um, to, either the other two Commissioners want to share their, uh, their wisdom, then I'll go to Commissioner Johnson. If, I mean, you don't have to speak, I just want to give you a chance before I, I moved on. Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Just a couple clarifying questions, so I understand this right, and I think you already mentioned this. The signature page, um, that's from the state, and we cannot change that, is that correct?
It's, that that language is actually contained in the statute.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't do that, and, and it's required that even though all of last year's Commissioners are still on this, the three preceding Commissioners are still here, it requires all seven of us to sign?
It says each Commissioner of the county commission, that's what the statute says, and that seems unfortunately.
It has to be on the Commission currently, or can it be at the Commissioners that were on it?
It doesn't say prior Commissioner, or commissioned in place at that time, it just says each Commissioner of the county commission.
So your interpretation is all seven?
My, my belief is that it, the intent is for the current Commission to sign off on it.
Okay.
Um, I also believe, Mr. Wagner, I don't know that anyone's ever going to actually dig into this, if you choose not to sign it, but I want you to be aware that, you know, the language of the statute has some penalties that aren't typical, and, and I, I don't want to tell you, you, you're okay not to sign it, because I think you should each read the statute and, or read the certification and make your decision.
And then the last question I have, it, it says, um, every receipt from every source, every dispersment, those don't all come before the Commission, do they?
Correct, not, not in a public setting, they don't. I mean, they're all, they're all gathered, and they're all part of our process.
Actually, they do now, so, for example, what you have on your agenda earlier today were all the receipts, all the invoices that were paid during that week, which is why you see that every week on an agenda. Those are the invoices, so yes, by the end of the year, you will have seen that information on every receipt that, or every invoice that we pay.
And that, did that happen last year for the three Commissioners that were here before us?
Um, it started, I want to say, we changed to that format probably October, um, and prior to that, they looked at each invoice separately, and all three signed it. But in the interest in talking about having seven Commissioners and trying to get seven signatures, um, we went to this format probably in October.
Okay, so that'll fix that for the, for the next year, but this year we have to look at.
Next.
So if we don't play this right, Stacy can put us all in prison, essentially.
Not Stacy, but someone very close to the Commission, maybe. It's one thing I do want to point out about this process, and I think it's actually interesting that this came up today, because, uh, I know this Commission has a real focus on efficiency of government. This is actually one of the most efficient things we've done in the last couple of years. Uh, it is not an understatement to say that it was a, a kind of a ridiculous process that we used to go through. And I mean, baskets filled with orange sheets that you guys, that they, the Commissioners would have to go through individually and, and initial, and it would take hours, it was a ridiculous process. And so this is, you know, the way we're, we've evolved to, uh, in, in one vote, you get, you get the opportunity to review everything that week, and in one vote, you get to sign off and give your affirmation that that's, that you're okay with it. It is a much more efficient process.
This may come as a shock to you, but I'm going to suggest we don't vote on this tonight. Uh, yeah, I, I think we should, uh, I think we should, um, come up with a, maybe a date, you know, reasonably far in advance to give time for everything to happen, uh, before we actually do the signatures on this. Now, are we going to have to pass it and then sign it, that is the procedure, is it not?
At some point, there will be, this, this needs to be signed, by whomever wants to sign or is willing to sign it, and then we will need to publish it. So I think the direction I'd like to get would be from the four new Commissioners. If your inclination is to do the homework from 2022 so that you can sign it, or is your inclination to, to not sign it, uh, and look for a basis upon which that can be done.
So, Commissioner, please proceed.
I'm looking at the PDF, and it looks like it's 735 pages, not 600, so I picked up an extra 100.
Maybe I got tired of looking at it after 623.
So, if, I would like to have at least a month. I, I mean, I got three kids and a full-time job, so looking through 735 pages is, uh, it's not going to be fun. Um, so I would like at least a month, but you said we have to sign this, is that?
I'm saying, I'm saying the statute says each Commissioner shall sign, I mean, at the end of the financial statement, each Commissioner, the county commission and the county clerk shall sign and append the following certificate, and then at least the certificate in front of it.
Because I don't know if I feel comfortable signing something when I wasn't even an elected official, but if I have to, I want a month to look through 735 pages.
I think that's, I think that's a good observation, I think, you know, whether, I think we can set a month, and then just kind of see how everybody's doing, and perhaps interact with the Administrator and make sure. But I do think we need to set ourselves a goal far enough in advance to where we have a little wiggle room in case something happens. Uh, I would point out two things, um, about what you're saying. One is that, uh, because you sign it does not mean you approve of that expenditure, it just means you acknowledge it. Uh, so you're saying, yes, I see this is, this has gone through.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing that I would say is, um, and once again, it kind of goes back to a discussion we had earlier this evening. I've done this for a while, and I'm really used to the idea that we have to sign and, and account for every penny. I've got to tell you, I've looked through these, uh, these warrants, I've signed them as low as like five bucks.
Yeah.
And I got to tell you, if, if it, uh, if there's a, an issue, it doesn't matter if the warrant that you're signing was, was for five or $5 million, the state doesn't distinguish, it doesn't set, have anything in there on the statutes that says if it's under a certain dollar amount, you get a pass. If you want to roll the dice, you can roll the dice, but the thing is, this is why I get so adamant about the ones that we just talked about passing, because having been through this process for some years, I take it very seriously, and maybe a little too seriously in the estimation of some, but I take our expenditure and our watchdog, uh, functions very seriously, and, uh, that is why I think we should allow the time for, for Commissioners, particularly those who are, are new to the process, to take the time to do this, because this is a serious matter. It's always a serious matter when we spend taxpayers' money. Uh, this time it just happens to have the force of law behind it.
Yeah, so I, I understand what you're saying, I think the, what we just passed was a little different, though, because that was an existing contract, we were just adding a printer to it, so, um, I guess Stacy, on the transparency portal for county expenditures, when we click on 2022 and it has that 735-page PDF, that's everything, we don't need to go anywhere else? Okay, I, okay, I didn't know if it was Stacy or you, sorry, Victor.
I don't mean to, uh, like, I just wanted to provide some.
Uh, Victor, go ahead, I mean, Mr. Auditor, please identify yourself for the audio.
Yeah, Victor Holbert, Clay County, I wanted to clarify something about the transparency portal. We're working with Administration, everyone, to kind of make it a little more robust with the new website, uh, but essentially you have a transparency portal that has a PO, accounting report, that's just purchase orders. So there are numerous ways that county makes payments, via, you know, credit card, uh, wires, things of that nature. And so, long ago, I decided, um, on the Auditor's page, you can find a vendor payment report, that's every county expenditure. So if you want to look at every expenditure, you should, you know, I would encourage, that's kind of the most, uh.
That's on your page?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, that's kind of like, you know, the most robust, um, you know, report for every single, you know, type of payment. But I do want to kind of qualify and throw some information out there, like Presion Commissioner said, you know, this really is, you're not agreeing to all the payments that have been made, you're really just, um, attesting to the fact that, you know, are they correct, are they accurate, like, like the Counselor mentioned in that statute? And so, you know, what the clerk's done is pulled a lot of various reports, and, and those have, you know, numerous controls in place to show that they are in fact accurate, uh, verified information. So if it, you know, provides you any, uh, you know, puts your mind to ease a little bit, um, as far as this entire responsibility is on me to make sure that this is correct, I wouldn't say that's the case. Another thing is, yes, as, as Counselor mentioned, this statute was changed by the Legislature last year. Um, it used to be in, in March, it also used to deal with only non-charter counties. Um, so now it deals with all counties as the way they've written it, uh, but it's also until, you know, uh, we have until June 30th. So a lot of, you know, fellow, fellow Auditors at the Association that I'm a part of wanted that, advocated for pushing that deadline back, because while it says it's a financial statement, I'd probably disagree with that terminology, it's really not. I think the importance here is that, that confirmation from Commissioners that you've reviewed things, but really it's not an audited financial statement, um, so I don't, you know, that, that terminology is, you know, not entirely correct, um, you know, so you really have kind of unaudited figures at, at this point.
Yeah, I pulled up your, your Excel spreadsheet, that's, that's good, so thank you for that, sure. So, do we need to make a motion to push this out a month, or how, what do we need to do?
Well, there's still some people who would like to comment, so let's go ahead and have the discussion, and then we will, uh, we will ask whether we just give consensus, which might be, that might, might be our best bet, that gives us more flexibility as we go forward. Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thanks, um, yeah, hopefully just giving some direction, we'll, we'll solve that. Question, though, for the county Counselor, because why not? Uh, is there any reason why, since it strikes me that in two years we'll have another set of elections, there is the opportunity for this to come up again? Is there an opportunity to do a friendly lawsuit against the state and compel the judicial? Is there an opportunity to do a friendly lawsuit against the state and compel the judiciary to explain this? And to provide better direction?
Yeah, so yes, there's, there is that. Um, I would, um, I think the, the, the cleanest route might be just to ask the legislature to go fix this.
There's that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and I don't, this doesn't feel partisan to me. This doesn't feel political or difficult.
Right.
Uh, it just feels like common sense. How can you vote on something when you weren't here and why would you certify? Um.
Right, well, I, I agree with, with our colleague that, you know, setting this aside for a month and taking action in a month makes total sense to me. But in that interceding month, uh, it would seem to me that there are some actions that we could also be asking for and taking, whether that is a legislative, uh, uh, resolution to this or a judicial one. Because again, even, even if we didn't do anything different and we all signed this, there's the possibility that we do this again in two years and that seems kind of silly. Um, so anyway, I'll just put that out there.
I agree. And I even thought potentially maybe even, uh, seeking an AG's opinion on this.
Yeah.
Uh, which wouldn't be a terrible approach. I mean, I think there's some options there. Um, and I think pushing it out at least a month makes a lot of sense for where we are tonight.
So based on, I think, Commissioner Whittington, I throw this out, you know, we have ample time, right? So I hate to push you to say within four weeks, you're going to go through all those pages. So my thought would be, you know, if the commission would be interested is to table this resolution until your meeting April 5th. Um, so that gives you several months. That still gives us time, um, to, once you approve it, to get signatures and get it in the newspaper to meet the June 30th deadline. So that would be my recommendation. So to give you ample time, um, to go through those documents.
Before I ask for, because assuming that there is a motion to table, uh, motion to table is non-debatable. So therefore we would have reached the end of our discussion before we cut off debate with a, uh, motion to table. I want to make sure everybody's had the chance to, uh, comment and make any questions that they have. One question that I would have was, I mean, whenever legislation is passed, as Commissioner, uh, Carpenter knows, rules are then promulgated. It doesn't sound like this allows a lot of wiggle room for the rules that are then promulgated as a result by the, the different agencies. I can't think we'd find any relief there. That's the only place I can other, other than that, that I can think of that we might find some, some possibility. But that's, doesn't seem terribly, terribly likely. So I think what Commissioner, uh, Wagner was saying about possibly a action from local government or one of the other, uh, relevant committees in the legislature, even that would not, unless, you know, absent an emergency clause, would not take effect until August of this year. But it's certainly something, I, I think we should raise as a bigger issue and that is, I think at some point we would do well to, as a commission, come up with a legislative agenda. And this might perhaps be one of our first, uh, recommendations to our delegation to Jeff City. Uh, the other thing I want to point out what is that, um, again, under the old regime, one of the positives on this was that, uh, commissioners could return, uh, a warrant, an expense. I had done it in the past for a couple of reasons. One being it lacked a signature. We're all human. Sometimes a signature doesn't get made. I've had to send it back through on rare occasion. Other occasions was if there was an inappropriate or questionable expense that I wanted to get more information on, I had the option to do that, as did commissioners who were operating under that particular set of rules. On the whole, I agree that the, the, the new, uh, the new regime that we're working under, the new protocol we're working under is, is better and more efficient. But, um, I just wanted to give a little historical perspective to some of our new members. With that, if there, are there any other comments or questions? Uh, is there a motion related to 2023-63?
I'd like to make a motion that we table 2023-63 until April 5th and revisit it then.
Motion has been made, let me repeat the motion. Motion has been made to table 2023-63 until April 5th meeting.
Yes.
With that, uh, no, no further debate is allowed. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
And that brings us to the final issue under our regular agenda. That is 2023-64. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-64 is approval of a service order for private internet services with Unite Private Networks LLC. And Director Shaw is here to provide information.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Shaw, Director of IT. This resolution before you now is to renew the services that we currently have throughout the county for internet services in the, in our private network. This is simply a renewal. Uh, we've had this since about 2007. We've added more, uh, multiple services along the way and this is just, uh, cleaning it up is what it's doing and finishing it. This to a matter that we can co-term these contracts altogether.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at the, um, at the name. It's Unite, not United Private?
It's Unite.
Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. I thought I would ask. I was in a TIF meeting the other day and I, I caught a typo on, on one of the documents and I got proper credit for being an eagle eye on spelling. Who knew? Who knew? Um, are there any questions?
That's the ex-teacher in you.
Excuse me?
That would be the ex-teacher in you.
I guess so. Uh, anyway, uh, are there any questions of the director or comments? Uh, I would remind commissioners that we have the option of either putting this on next week's agenda or passing it this evening, uh, depending on what the commission sees fit to do. Uh, I don't believe this has the expenditure, it's expending money. This is renewal of a contract, so it does not trigger the, the criteria of going on regular session next week. And it does not have any, uh, it does not have any controversy. So with that, is there a motion?
Real quick.
Please proceed.
Cause you, you had said this is going to save us money, right?
This will save us money.
Yeah.
The bill that's already been paid this month's already been paid.
Yeah. And, and I know this company extremely well because in my prior life, uh, it used to be Unite was the telephone company in Carney and I worked for them. This was a secondary company they had. And it, uh, they did exemplary work on the dark fiber services or any, any major fiber that they delivered. And they did it for a lot of school districts and now they're doing it for the county. It's, it's an outstanding service. I, and because it will save us, I don't see a reason for putting it off. I, you know, I think we go ahead and, and, uh, approve it and get on with it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Director, would, uh, approval this evening or next week affect the savings involved?
No, it wouldn't. We've already made the payment for the month of February. Our next bill will not be due till March.
Very well. Further comments or questions? Commissioner, uh, Carpenter?
Commissioner, thank you. I, uh, will gladly vote with you all to approve it tonight. Um, I think that means we'll have no items from this week's on next week's, uh, agenda, if I understand correctly. Um, which is fine. I do, I, I think I'll just, for one last time, maybe reiterate that if, if we want to move in the direction of doing things in one week, I'm certainly open to that idea. I've discussed that with a couple of folks. I just think we ought to consider actually changing the rules to reflect that new policy. The rules as they're written right now, the ordinance under which we govern ourselves says that we're going to do it in two weeks with an emergency exception. I don't, I think we're about to utilize the emergency exception for, for this item. I'm not sure that's in the spirit of the, of the rules that govern us as a body, but we're about to do it anyway. Um, so I would just suggest that maybe we update the rules that govern us as a, as a body, um, so that we're not sort of ignoring them every week. Um, and I think that'll be the last time I mention it. So, thanks.
I would agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I think when we make rules, if we decide not to follow them, they're not rules, they are guidelines. Um, that's just my observation. If we're going to make rules and we expect other people to follow them, we should follow them ourselves. Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Um, well, yeah, if, if, if everything's an emergency, then nothing's an emergency, I think, as the saying would go. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll kind of back up, uh, Commissioner Carpenter's, um, speech because as I look at what staff has turned in, which then goes to show to the public what is on our agenda. It asks, what meeting do you need this passed? In this case, it suggests we can do this next week. And there, I, even though this is a pretty innocuous thing, uh, I mean, we're saving money, we're doing all these wonderful things. For those who are looking at our agendas and expecting us to take an action on one day and then we say, nope, we can just do it today. I'm not picking on you, but I just, yeah. It does seem to suggest that we're kind of doing, everything's an emergency, we're just going to do it. And I think that speaks to our colleague's comment that when we have rules and we're not really following them and yet there's things on our agendas that say, you don't need to do it this week, you can do it next week. And we say, well, that's okay, we'll just do it. That begins to be a little bit of a slippery slope to me. Um, so I want to be that guy who's just going to say, we can try to pass it today. I'm going to vote no because, you know, sorry you drew this, you drew a short straw. I'm sorry about that. But, but then that leads, but, but the question I was going to ask is the existing contracts that we have, when do they elapse? Because it suggests to me that if, if those contracts are still relevant and good for a week, we're not really losing a whole lot. Am I, am I, am I making myself feel better when I say that or is that really the truth?
The contracts are not lapsed. They are expired, but we're on month-to-month because we're in good grace with, with them. And we have, I consider Unite Private Network a partner. We've been with them since the early 2000s. And we just keep renewing this contract and adding services, moving services as needed.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate that. Um, my, my, my tendency is to think, you know, I, I, I know this is an easy one. This is an easy call, just do it. But for the reasons I mentioned, but I, I would at least suggest that it goes on a consent so we can be quick and done with you next week and be on our way. And, and then beyond that, I'll just, I'll just reiterate what our colleague said and that is that if, we, we, we've dealt with, well, I'll, you know, I'll save that for Commissioners' comments. Let's, let's, let's let, let him get off the dice.
Very well. Any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Red Johnson?
I just want to clarify a few things. A couple have brought up this idea of an emergency. The ordinance doesn't say anything about an emergency that I know of. There needs to be an emergency to prove this. All it says is, we can approve anything we want the first day as long as it's unanimous. That's all it says. And so if we all agree that we're going to pass this, then the ordinance is very clear. It doesn't need to be an emergency. Yeah, you can pass this today, just like we did everything else, just about everything else we've done. But there, there's nothing that says it's, it's an emergency or anything like that. It's just, hey, if it's unanimous, if you guys all agree you're going to pass this, pass it tonight. That's all it's saying. And just by the mere fact that if you say, you know, we'll just put this on consent for next week, well, you've already consented that you're going to pass it anyway, unless there's some reason that you don't want to pass it. It's like, it's like we're, we're going to put it off just because we can. That doesn't make sense. It's, it's a, you know, hey, maybe if you come kiss the ring, we'll do it tonight. But it's, it's ridiculous. That's not what the ordinance says. And I, I agree, we can, we can go back and work. And I, I talked with Commissioner Carpenter about maybe coming up with something that we can work with this ordinance and make it a little bit cleaner. But to think that, that we can only do this in emergency or that it's supposed to be a certain way, I get that's some past practice that you, that you guys have done in the past. But that's not what the ordinance says. I want to make it clear. And maybe that, if council wants to chime in on that, the ordinance doesn't say anything about an emergency. The ordinance doesn't say anything about spending money or not either. The ordinance just says if we all agree, if we're unanimous, we can pass it now. And I don't see why we wouldn't.
Um, I'll go to you just a moment, Commissioner Carpenter. I would point out that, uh, Commissioner Wagner, I think, made an excellent point and that is one of transparency. If a citizen saw this issue and say it was not as innocuous as we think it is to some other citizen, some other citi-, some citizen may decide this is in fact something I want to weigh in on, they see that it's going to pass next week. And they weren't able to make it today's meeting, so they come to the next meeting in full expectation of being able to have their opinion heard on an issue before this body. It would be too late. Commissioner Carpenter, Commissioner Carpenter, I think you had a comment. I'll come back to you. I didn't want to ignore Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks, yeah, and I, um, uh, what, what the ordinance sets forth is the work session, business session dynamic in which we, uh, hear things for a first reading, uh, during the work session and vote, uh, after the second reading on, uh, at the business session. That's the whole concept behind work session and business session, uh, putting things on a regular agenda for the following week or a consistent agenda. It's the whole, you know, we're not the only governmental body that operates under a, a similar framework. But it is a choice that we can undo. And that's all I'm saying. We, we can make every meeting a, a business session, get rid of the whole difference between work session and business session, get rid of the whole concept. I think that's perfectly debatable and fine. And that if it wants to be proposed, we ought to debate it and perhaps even do it. Um, but that is the framework we have. And so when we treat every meeting as a business meeting, then it calls into question, why are we calling things a work session and a business session? And, and creating a standard in which the operating baseline is, we're going to do first reading and then vote after second reading. That's what we tell each other, staff and the public, is our standard policy. That's what we've said via ordinance is our standard policy. I'm simply suggesting that if we're not going to do it, I think that's fine. You know, I don't think, you know, let's do it today. That's fine. I, you know, Commissioner Wagner said he's going to vote no. I already said I'll vote yes because I don't think it's that big a deal. I just think that we ought to follow the rules. That's all. And if we're wanting to change the rules in the name of efficiency, then I think we ought to come to the commission meeting. I think you all should look through the ordinance, look through words like business session and work session and all that. Cross out things you don't like, rewrite it in the way you want it. And then I think we should change the ordinance. And I, I just think it's a very easy fix. That's my, that's my suggestion.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I think we could clean it up a little bit and make it easier. But, but again, for clarification, past practice, um, and ordinances are two different things. What the ordinance says, we're not violating any ordinance by, by, by voting yes on this. The reason, keep in mind, there's often, there are things that require two readings. Certain ordinances require two readings. So you have to do, you have to present it one, one week and, and, and vote on it the next. That's just a requirement. That has nothing to do with preventing us from voting on anything that we want that's not a requirement in this meeting. And to Commissioner Nolte's point, President Commissioner Nolte, uh, the idea that a citizen might want to comment on this, we had, the citizen have had access to all this information just like we did last week. And so it's posted a week in advance. If they want to comment on it, and, and certainly if there's something that we think someone is going to comment on, but, but for whatever reason hasn't yet, I mean, we, we put this over. But let's be honest, no one's going to comment on, on, on this topic. There, there's nobody's going to comment on that. And if they would, did want to, if they really felt that strongly about it, they could, they'd be here because this has been public since last week. So the idea that, hey, we want to give people time to, to comment, well, if it's something we thought they'd comment on or, you know, they, they've had an opportunity to, opportunity to, to first of all, but also if we thought it was something that was a little bit, but I, I agree. I think we need to clean up the, the ordinance just so it makes some people more comfortable. I, I think, um, I would like to see us get rid of this business session, work session thing. It's like, you know, we're, we're in business every time we're here. We're too big a county to do this business, hold the business off just for every other week, for twice a month. It's like, let's take care of business once a week, if we can. We're just too big and we have too much things going on. If we can get it done, like tonight, I was super proud of everybody tonight. We're getting things done, moving things, not pushing it off because we don't have to. One thing we needed to push off, it made sense to. If things don't make sense to push off, then don't push them off. Cause let's face it, no one's going to look at this again. No one is going to look at this again. And next week, we're just going to, just like we did the last couple of weeks. We say no, or, or one or two people say no, but then we put on consent, we just don't even look at it again and we don't talk about it again, we just approve it. There's no more information we need. We've had all the information for a week. We don't have any more questions of Kevin here. We don't have any other issues, but just to say we don't want to approve it just because we can say we don't want to approve it. The ordinance says we can approve it. The ordinance doesn't say there has to be an emergency. The ordinance just says, hey, if it's unanimous, you don't have to wait. And this is not one that requires two readings, like some do. So there's no reason why we can't. I mean, I'm not going to lose sleep over if somebody doesn't want to approve it tonight because I don't think we're going to lose our internet service. But nonetheless, I just think this is part of government being inefficient. And it's like, why, it, it, to me, this is the kiss the ring mentality. Hey, I can because I, I'm going to do this because I can. It's like, what's best for, we have, again, probably about 25 people in this chamber right now. All 25 are county employees. They're all making, they're all on the clock, all of us. It's just inefficient. Why make them come back? Why make them do this again? Why make them, why make them wait? We don't need to make them wait. We know we're going to approve it. We know we are. Everyone's going to vote, but you, you vote yes on this. I know you are. So why not just do it right now? That's just my, my thought. And I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I, I think it's hard for some people who've been on the commission for a while to, to, uh, to think about the way that I think about it because I don't read it in the same way that, that, uh, that, that maybe, maybe some of you do. But I do believe that we could clean up a little bit and I like to see a business session every week.
That's good. Uh, yeah, then that, Commissioner Carpenter is correct and we should have that. As it stands right now, we told the citizens of this county that we would hear it next week. And I'm not terribly, um, I'm not terribly on the, uh, week, and I'm not terribly, I'm not terribly on the, on the bandwagon of breaking our word to our constituents. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Just, just so we're clear, in the last job I had in elected office, I had instances where something was introduced and voted on the same day, where no one had a chance to look at it. And so I am, I understand when you have to do things swiftly. But my issue is not so much, actually, my issue is not so much about the folks in this room who want to get something done right now, and that Kevin, poor Kevin's standing up here, it's doing, so, do you have a, like, something that helps you keep up? Anyway, my problem is, next week, staff is going to get the same request for request for commission action, and it's going to ask them, what is immediate action required, and if yes, why? What is the work session dates that requested, and what is the business session data is requested? And I will bet you, unless something radically changes as far as the instruction that the, the county administrator gives, that we're going to see no and different dates for work sessions and business sessions. And it seems to me that rather than just kind of leaving it up to us and sending things out to the world that says when we're going to take action, we should be setting, just as we did with the planning department, what actions we expect. How are these requests to come in? And so, yeah, we could, we could pass this for Kevin today. Everybody wants to, I want to, but I know I'm going to have this same problem next week. And I would just as soon set some expectation, not only for ourselves, but for our staff, that when you come forward, what are you asking for and why? Otherwise, we're just guessing, and we're going to ask the same questions. Is, are we saving money? Is this contract due? Can we, can we do this faster, faster if we vote on it today? And the answers, we'll probably know what those answers are going to be, but the reason why these are set as they are is because for the one thing that is going to take longer, if we're setting the stage to everybody that works for the county or views what we do, this no longer becomes trustworthy, because the, the rules that we have set for ourselves, we will break all the time. I would rather tell Kevin, come back next week and we're going to take care of you, and then we make the commitment to go through our process, to then say to our staff, from the administrator on down, this is how you should bring something before this body. To me, I will accept inconveniencing Kevin for one week to suggest to all of us that, that Commissioner Carpenter is right, and that we should set ourselves to set an agenda and a process that we agree to, that tells our staff what is to be expected, and tells the person who decides one day, actually, I do care what the county is doing, that when they read something on here, they will take it as fact, and, and I'll leave it at that. And thank you for indulging me, Kevin. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Lawson, I believe you had a comment to make?
Yeah, I, I do. I got to say one thing, I love you, okay? But, but, but.
I always get the but.
This is so far from Kansas City, Missouri. You can't even say Kansas City, Missouri, in this, this wonderful courtroom. Here's the bottom line. I, I do feel that Jay Johnson is right. We're, we're not going with everything that comes before us. If there's some gray area, I would say, no, 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 let's really investigate it, let's look a little farther, isn't there a better way to do it? I, I would absolutely be on board with doing that. When we've got somebody like Kevin that comes to us, that's smart as heck, knows his business, and is going to bring something forth to us to say, this is a better way to do it, it's going to save us a little money, then I think, my way of thinking, it's kind of a kick in the teeth to tell him, eh, we got to think about it, we're going to hold it over another week. We should go ahead and approve it. Now, the other week, we had something that I felt was vital to hold off until July and wait, and then approve it. No, we had to get that in there right away. Oh my God, let's get this passed right now. It's vital, the world's going to come to an end if we don't do it. So with this, it's so darn cut and dried. We already got the people, they're already giving us service, they're providing great service, and he's comfortable with it. I just don't, I think it, each case, it's a case-by-case situation, and if in one of these meetings, we approved 10 things and didn't pass them on to the next week, I think that the people of the county would say, hooray, let, let, you know, whatever comes to us that's, that's valid and solid, let's get it approved and not dally around with it. So, anyway, I, and I do think that there should be maybe some regulations that are changed, there's nothing wrong with that. We've done it the same way for 105 years, so if we wanted to make some changes, change is a good thing, we're all proof of that, or we all wouldn't be sitting up here, all seven of us. So change is sometimes good, we need to look at the process of changing this, but that doesn't mean we have to hold up everything every time it comes through. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
I just want to say that I served a number of years here with a couple of commissioners, not present at this moment, who were very much in favor of efficiency. And efficiency is not the be-all, end-all. With that, further comments, Commissioner Johnson.
Just my last thing, I, I just think we're getting caught up in the process of our mission. Our mission here is just to approve this, be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, be transparent about it, we're doing all those things. And, and mission is, we just need to approve this, and we get caught up in the process over, and you see this a lot in government, you see this a lot in, in career politicians, it's process of our mission. What's our mission here? Let's get it done, let's move on to the next thing.
Anything further, Commissioner Red Widdington?
Yeah, so I just want to comment on what you just said, that you served with two former commissioners who believed in efficiency. I wouldn't say they believed in efficiency, and I think comparing what we are doing here to what Jean and Luanne did is not a fair statement. Somebody that stood up and fought against Jean and Luanne, I don't think anything Jay Johnson has done, Joanne has done, or anybody on this commission has done, ha, is comparable to what Jean and Luanne did. They did a lot of things behind closed doors. We are trying to make government more efficient, so to compare this to Jean and Luanne, that's not fair, Jerry.
It's, the comparison is not so much in, in the severity, I'm just saying that efficiency is not the be-all, end-all. I think that we could require, I think, once again, I think some degree of transparency. I think citizens should be given the maximum amount of opportunity to comment on any issue, and the important part of that is any issue that is important to them. This issue is, is not of great importance to us, it would seem, well, it is of importance, but it's not of overriding importance. There may be a citizen who sees this as terribly, terribly important, and I think denying any citizen the opportunity to speak when they have had that opportunity forward to them is not good policy.
So Jean and Luanne wasted millions of dollars in taxpayer money. We wanted to add a Ricoh printer to an existing contract, that's not comparable. Jean and Luanne did a lot of things behind closed doors that the public didn't have access to. Like Commissioner Johnson said, this has been out on the internet for a week now. If somebody wanted to come and complain about the contract we're going to have about dark fiber with Unite, or adding a Ricoh printer to a existing contract, they would be here. I don't see anybody here. So I just, I just want to say, I don't appreciate you comparing what we are doing here to Jean and Luanne. I just, I take exception to that. If somebody who fought for that.
I think what I'm saying is, it's a slippery slope. The reason they were able to do so many things behind closed doors is because they ignored the rules. And I'm saying the rules are there for a reason. I think if we're going to change the rules.
But we're not ignoring the rules.
Commissioner Thompson, I believe you wanted to comment, and you had not had a chance yet.
No, thank you. I was going to say, I don't, I think everyone in this room is right on many aspects, and I don't think anybody wants to hold up government. We don't want to make people wait, I feel bad, we're just letting Kevin, Kevin, I know you love listening to us all talk, standing up there. I know we all want to follow the process, I'm a rule follower, I like to have a set, you know, this is the path we're going to take, and this is what we promised people, that this is the path we're going to take. I just think this is probably, we need to have a conversation, and I don't know, right now in the middle of Kevin's item on the agenda is quite it, so I was going to say, is there any way we could put that, a conversation, even just a discussion item for the commission to discuss the policy, and we can take our notes and bring them next week, because I think our agenda's going to be pretty, pretty empty, and we can maybe just kind of get, so we don't have to do this every week, and I don't think any of us want to do this. We just want to have some ground rules so we follow, and then we all can get along and be very happy. So.
If I could, I just would, to completely co-sign to that, I think we absolutely can solve this issue very, very easily. It's, it's a matter of, you know, we've created, treated this session like a business session, I, you know, maybe we'll pass this one too, I guess we'll see. And I'm fine with that, I honestly am. Like, let's just, let's pass these things, that's fine. I don't, I don't think it's, it's, I think it's fine. I just don't think that what we should do every week is have the same conversation and come in and ask, you know, say that the process we have is inefficient. Instead of saying the process is inefficient every week, let's change the process, that's all I'm saying, and we can do it, I think we can do it very easily, so let's just do it. Also, I do feel like, Commissioner Lawson, I love you, but Kansas City is a great city, lifelong Kansas City, and today's a great, a great day in the history of Kansas City, a beautiful, wonderful day. I think something like 70 or 75% of the Western District is, is comprised of Kansas City and its residents.
Eastern District also has some, some Kansas City.
And, and even some of the Eastern, so I, proud of, proud to be a lifelong Kansas City, and, and anyway, you all are wonderful people, I think we can fix this very easily next week or sooner, so, thanks.
With that, unless there's further comment, I would like to recommend that this might be an appropriate issue to bring up for discussion, so that we can actually iron out what the rules of the road really are in a consistent manner, and that we all understand what's going to be happening going forward. With that, unless there's further comment on the, the issue before us, I'm sorry, who made the motion? I've forgotten, we've gotten so far down the road. Commissioner Carpenter, did you make?
What did I make?
I did, who made the motion for?
What did I make a motion on?
To prove it.
I didn't make that.
I didn't think you did.
I sure as heck did not. No.
Okay, let's, was there not a motion made?
There wasn't a motion.
Okay, I, I thought somebody had made a motion. Let's, let us get back to the original issue of 2023-64, now that we've talked all the way around it. Is there a motion related to 2023-64? Commissioner Wagner?
I moved to place 2023-64 on consent for next week's meeting.
Motion's been made to place 2023-64 on next week's consent agenda discussion. Did you have anything, Commissioner? You, you looked like you were going to say something.
Well, we don't usually do motions to put things on consent agenda, we usually just do consents, so I'm just trying to understand exactly what we do.
This is the last item, and it's the, and the.
I see, oh, so, 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 okay. And it's the only item that we haven't dealt with today.
Everything's either been approved or tabled, so it's the last one, so.
Appreciate the clarification, thank you.
I actually had the same thing across my mind, Commissioner Carpenter, this way I looked over at council, and he said, no, you can go ahead and do this. I thought, okay, okay, we'll go ahead and do this. All right, so, let's go ahead, and is there a motion for the items that we have discussed?
There's still one.
I guess, motion's really been made, and since, as it's been pointed out, that's the only thing that's on here, it really does suffice. So, motion is made to place 2023-64 on next meeting's consent agenda. Discussion seeing, excuse me, go ahead. Just clarification, so how does this work? If, if this is voted down?
The next motion.
But it has to be unanimous for the next one?
To approve.
So it would automatically go?
Then it's going to go to next week.
Yeah. And so, and you're not going to vote in favor of this for tonight, so it's going to go next week, you know, you don't have a problem with it going next week anyway?
Okay, whatever, next week it is.
Okay. I'll take that as the close of your remarks. If there's no further discussion, you recognize to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Widdington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
That concludes our regular agenda today. That brings us to our discussion items. The first item under discussion with the Carney Mayor Randy Pogue has been removed until a further, until a future date. That brings us to Planning and Zoning Commission and Board Zoning Adjustment Changes. Administrator?
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to turn this over to the county councillor, but as you know, going to a new form of government, there are a number of items that require changing, and one of the components has to do with our Planning and Zoning Commission and our Board of Zoning Adjustment. So I'm going to have the county councillor walk you through that.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So in the, the spirit of tonight's issue of efficiency in government, by changing to the Constitution, we have the opportunity, under Chapter 64, to move from our current set of P and Z requirements to a first-class charter set of P and Z requirements, and it's a recommendation of staff that we do that. It will change the makeup slightly in, of planning and zoning, and significantly for BZA. We believe it will allow things to move to, number one, be approved potentially at the staff level, sooner, just at the staff level, and potentially things also at the planning and zoning level. And you'll see fewer things potentially coming to you, and things moving through the, the system much faster, instead of some things that currently take, by the time they apply, go through P and Z, go, come here, have two meetings, can take two months or so, we think some things can move much quicker. So in the, in the near future, you're going to see an ordinance coming through that will reconfigure the two boards. I want to give you that update, just let you know it's coming. And, and I'll tell you a little bit about how the two boards are going to be kind of constituted. The planning and zoning currently is six, and they have, is it from five citizens, from different, okay. So, so there are six members, five of whom are citizens that have to be from very specific townships. That goes away, and that's actually a really good thing for us, because it's been a real struggle in some situations to, to get the right people from the right locations. So the, the planning and zoning will go to 10, which will be six citizens, one county highway department employee, the county engineer typically, one commissioner, and two members of city planning and zoning committees, and that'll be the 10. The BZA will change significantly, it will still be, it'll go to three commissioners. Now, I understand the BZA meets no more than two or three times a year typically? Yeah. So it, it is very irregular in how it meets and not very, very involved. We anticipate in the next, you know, couple sets of meetings, you'll see this ordinance coming through, and just want to give you a heads up that that's what's happening. Certainly happy to field any questions on that at this time, and we do have some recommendations on how perhaps those, those groups will be, kind of, how, how we'll have those, you know, positions apportioned.
I want to mention that the, that's a kind of chair.
Of each of the cities? Yeah, so, of the cities in Clay County, we have to have two members who are not only on the Planning and Zoning Committee for those cities, but the chairs. And so we've identified several cities, we're starting to reach out to them to see, you know, who might be doing it. Generally speaking, I think our preferences for, for cities that tend to at least be closer to or touch the unincorporated area makes more sense than, say, North Kansas City, for example, which, if that's who we have to end up with, and so be it, because they have to consent. But we're focusing on the cities that at least touch the unincorporated area. So, questions? Like I said, you'll be seeing this in the next few meetings, but I want to give you a heads up that that's what's coming. I think, again, I think it is going to make things more efficient, hopefully keep the simple stuff out of your way, but more importantly, allow the citizens who need simple stuff approved to get it approved faster.
Any questions or comments? Very good.
All right. Thanks, all.
Thank you. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
I will make these brief. The first is to remind everyone that the county offices will be closed Monday, February 20th, in observance of President's Day. And also that the commissioners' next meeting is a business session next Wednesday, February 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. In light of the agenda, which it looks like we will have one consent item, and we will have a few things on immediate action, we will, based on your direction, what I heard this evening, add to that under discussion, the topic that you've been talking about for several weeks now, about trying to put some parameters around what you're looking for, for adoption of immediate action versus taking two readings and two meetings. I would ask that if you do have ideas right now, for those of you, you know, you've been through several meetings now, if you have some ideas of just kind of general topics, if you would like to send me just a bullet by an email, I'll compile those as a list and get those out to you all, sort of as a starting point for your discussion and where you want to go next week, and add to it, delete from it, or give some guidance to it. And then staff will come back then and propose language changes based on your direction and the ordinance for your consideration.
Thank you very much. That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson?
Just real quickly, adding to discussions, another discussion, Adam, I'd like to see, maybe not next week, but sometime in the future, and I've talked to the president commissioner about this, is prior to us newbies coming on the commission, the invocation was stopped. There's no longer invocation at the beginning of our meeting. I know they have it at Kansas City, city council still has one, federal government, state governments, they still have, for whatever reason, it was discontinued here. I'd like to have a discussion on that and why it was discontinued, and I think I know why, but, and the possibility of bringing that back again. Not putting the onus on our administrator to do that, but finding a way that we could bring that back if the commission's in agreement with that. But a discussion item anyway, on invocation.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments, other than, you know, we're the champs. It's a good day.
Nice tie. Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Lawson?
Just want to make one clarification, John. I apologize. I was not talking about the city of Kansas City. I meant to say the council, not the city. Yeah, yeah. I like Kansas City. Go Chiefs. I do have one thing I want to ask. And Diana, I think this would probably be in your bailiwick. I know that one time, I can't remember, in a conversation, you talked about your leadership group that you do, I guess, weekly, or whenever it is. You know, a long time ago, I know that here at the courthouse, they used to have something similar to that. It included all of the office holders and the commissioners, you know, it was, had to be posted, of course. And, but what it was, was it was kind of a, like you probably do, I'm not sure what your leadership meeting is like, but it was a trading of ideas. And so sometimes, maybe the treasurer would say, you know, I've had some problems with such and such, and somebody else would say, we had the same problem, and here's what we did to fix it. It was a trading of ideas, meeting of the minds, however you... So in a conversation with a couple of the existing office holders, I asked them, and a couple of the commissioners, I asked them if that was available to us, to come to your leadership meeting, as all office holders that wanted to be there. Would that be possible? I could see that as being a big plus for us in a lot of ways, to find out about all the goings-on in the different departments, and what maybe we can do to make it better, or how they could help us. So, but how do you feel about that?
So my thought would be on that is, you know, let us think about that and what the best approach would be. I don't know how frequently that needs to happen. Certainly, one of the things that we have talked about is the strategic planning session of the commission, and certainly individuals will be at that. Staff will be there, there'll be a piece and a part of it with the office holders. So, you know, that's an opportunity to really do that brainstorming, along with goals, objectives, you know, a SWOT analysis, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what are our challenges? So that, to me, would be the appropriate venue for having those discussions.
So if I wanted to come in and sit in on one of your leadership meetings, would that be a bad thing? Would you mind that?
I would say typically that's not usually what happens, but if there's a specific topic that anyone wants to kind of talk about leadership team about, we could certainly establish something.
I just wanted, I was just thinking, just to come and sit quietly in the back, believe it or not.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yeah, so today, we celebrate National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. The county has 17 SRO deputies, so just want to give a shout out to them for the great work that they do in helping to, you know, keep our kids safe, our schools safe, and also just be a positive influence to them. And over the last couple of weeks, I know we've had a lot of conversations about the airport. Last week, I talked to several of the airport advisory committee people, and I just want to throw it out there that I think it might be a good idea for the commission to have a special commission meeting sometime in the near future, with staff in the airport